Take in.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Um.
I know.
Could you?
Clear my screen and show the plan for everybody if that.
Yeah, the convention, on the conventional, right?
That's right.
Let's start with that.
Everybody see that all right?
Yeah.
All right, so this is our conventional layout coming into Bennett Lot Road, the right of way goes all the way from Bennett Lot Road up through Emory's Bridge Road. We have five lots around that proposed right of way.
Now, I'm just to beat a dead horse here, this, uh, this, uh, this plan has not been revised, that Resource Protection District will not be on this plan, correct?
That is correct. So now that we've determined that that is not a Gunquit Brook and that is not the Resource Protection District line, um, that language and those line work will be removed.
And, and we will, uh, we'll, we're, we're tasking, I guess, ATAR to evaluate whether or not that's a tributary Brook.
Hmm.
And, uh, and then we'll evaluate what restrictions there are from those. I'm not sure there's any on this case, but we ought to, we ought to have that documented.
Right. I mean, that I can see some potential for setbacks looking at the line work here, but it wouldn't get rid of any of the building envelopes or buildable areas for, for the lots. The ones I'm looking at are lots two and three. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Bill.
Yes.
Um, can I speak?
Sure.
Yeah, so, uh, just to be clear, uh, it's my understanding that Joe is going to make that final determination. I think there's no problem with that tar, uh, looking at it, uh, but am I misunderstanding it?
Well, we, we could do it at the town's expense, or it could be done at the developer's expense. Did it, or is Joe competent? Joe, do you feel comfortable? You could make that determination?
Yeah, I could review it.
Okay.
I think it.
If you're.
Gives a lot more credibility once.
Okay, I agree. If you're, if you feel, uh, you're qualified to do that, then, um, go, go ahead and do that and, and ATAR can have their opinion too, but let, let's, let's, let's keep that internal then. That's fine. Thank you. Um, a couple of things from last time, uh, I think it was correctly pointed out that there would be five dwellings associated with this roadway, not, uh, six dwellings, not five.
That's right.
Because the one down on Emory's Bridge Road, that would need to be that the, the, the road would need to be upgraded from, uh, minor or whatever it is, the next one. It's got the classifications here. And is there, uh, is there road widths or right of way implications of going to that next classification?
Uh, the road width, because of the requirement for a sidewalk, but the right of way stays the same.
Yeah.
Since we've removed the right of way from the subdivision calculation as it is, doesn't make it, doesn't make any.
Correct. So the only, the, the, it can be accommodated with the next, uh, classification roadway. It would, with that next classification roadway, uh, widen the roadway and increase the wetlands impacts somewhat.
I imagine it would, yep.
Yeah. So I think we need a revised and corrected wetlands impact of the conventional subdivision, including the apparent driveway necessary to get to lot two. The two or three, whatever it is.
Now, the cluster subdivision, is that going to be a five or a six lot?
Five. But, but the roadway that is, uh, fundamental to the conventional subdivision has to serve the, 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 the house down on Emory's Bridge Road.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I, I think we'd like to see the revised, um, uh, roadway layout on the conventional with the confirmed wetlands impact. And then an explanation of how that wetlands impact is or is not permissible. And Ken talked about last time it being permitted, not as a permit by rule, but some next thing. I think you ought to understand what that is uh, in order to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, is that, am I making sense?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes I don't.
Yep.
So, so that we're looking at a conventional subdivision that, that it's been, uh, what's alert I'm looking for? It's been really thought about and we need to convince ourselves that all these five lots would be permissible, not only under the South Berwick zoning ordinance, but Maine DEP wetlands permitting. And then, then we'll understand that and then we can convert those to the cluster.
Would it, would it be helpful conceptually to see where the driveways would go on this, just as a simple curb cut location? Because one of the things I think that was confusing is I think it's lot two, you'd have to have an easement to get to.
Yeah.
Buildable area of lot three.
That's an excellent point, David. Yeah. And if that could be shown too, that, that, that just goes into this deep to make sure that each lot can be developed, uh, legally. Thank you, David.
Yeah. Well, if that's how Brian was planning on getting in there, so.
Yeah.
Probably easiest.
Yeah. So if you can come back with that, then, uh, uh, we can probably dust ourselves off and move forward.
All right. Any other major issues that have been brought up? I, I don't want to get stuck up in another meeting before completeness.
I, I, those are, those are the ones that I thought of. If others have them, now would be a good time to talk about it. Okay.
All right.
Hearing none. Wait, uh, Mr. Cal.
I do have a question regarding the conventional subdivision road right of way. Okay, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a 50 foot right of way.
I believe so.
Um, the road would be if, if it's a six, the six lot development, it would be 22 feet wide with, um, sidewalk and, and curbing, which would still.
I'm not sure curbing, but, uh.
Whatever.
Whatever it is, yeah.
It would still fit within that 50 foot right of way.
Uh, ATAR will, uh, confirm that, but I believe it would.
Brian?
It will, yeah.
So I guess I'm not seeing what the issue with the conventional subdivision roadway width is.
Uh, there's more paved width, it's within the right of way, there's more wetlands impacts at the wetlands crossings. It's a greater width of disturbance across the wetlands than what you have there now.
But the right of way is factored into that whole equation.
Well, the, uh, the right of way is not relevant to the wet, the constructed wetlands impacts. The road is constructed within the right of way. And if it's wider, it's going to hit more wetlands along the, along the, uh, latitude, the longitude of the roadway. So you have a minor additional wetlands, uh, wetlands disturbance than has shown on this plan here.
Oh, it actually makes the case for a cluster even stronger.
It does actually. You're right, Manley. Because we're avoiding that. And also, uh, you need to show where the, if there's a crossing of the wetlands for driveways, they're showing. So we, we want to see what the total wetlands impact would be for the conventional. And then, uh, we need to have a presentation that that is permissible, not from the local zoning ordinance, but that you could get wetlands permits from Maine DEP to do that. If that can be demonstrated, then I think we leave this behind.
Right. And at the, and if you recall, um, at the last meeting, I think there had been some calculations on the left-hand side of, of the screen that Brian sharing with us right now.
Yeah.
So we wanted to make sure that all the frontages met that traditional standard. So here's a lot size, here's, you know, we wanted that comparison. If they meet that standard, then they move along to the traditional, I mean, to the cluster subdivision.
Very good.
All right.
Then if there's no other comments or discussion on that, uh, we'll, uh, we'll move on and, uh, put this little uh, piece behind us for now.
All right, that sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all for your time. Have a great night.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mike, you're more than welcome to join us. We're gonna talk marijuana for the next hour or so.
I think I'm good. But you, you all enjoy that very much. Thank you very much for.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate you're, you're doing what you did with the letters and I appreciate you're taking the time with me over the weekend.
Oh, my pleasure. So. Take care.
Expect.
Okay. All right, um, we have two marijuana issues tonight. Uh, and we can take them up in either order. Uh, as listed in the agenda, the first is we, uh, determined that we would, we would revisit uh, the recommendations to the town council on the medical marijuana storefront, uh, uh, standards from a year and a half ago now, almost. Based on the experience over the last, um, year and a half or so, uh, most of you know, but maybe not all of you know, that the town council at their meeting last Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday, voted to institute a moratorium on additional medical marijuana storefronts until these, the, the, uh, ordinance has been reviewed and recommendations made and reconsidered by the town council. I don't know if you knew that. Um, that was not known to us when we met the, 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 the week, the week before. Uh, and became, I became aware of it between the week and they did in fact vote, uh, to, uh, put a moratorium on additional permits under the medical storefront until, uh, and I guess that's going to be finalized next, next meeting or something like that, and maybe retroactive to the previous meeting, but I'll ask Perry to comment on that in a second. And, uh, yeah, Perry, can you describe how, how long that, that would be and what sort of nature that is? Uh, you're, you're, you're muted. Yeah, thank you, Perry.
I guess we're ready to go now. These meetings every night here lately. Uh, we're, we have 180 day more emergency moratorium in place, which means it goes back to our meeting of the ninth. We met last night, uh, for both, uh, to schedule a public hearing. One of the counselors didn't wanted to do some change with the language. Uh, so we will be setting the public hearing on the, uh, on the 23rd. Our next town council meeting, which is also the same time as we've got the, uh, joint, joint meeting with, uh, with, uh, the planning board on both of the, uh, adult use referendums that we have. Uh, and so we'll have till August or we'll have until, uh, 180 days after August, uh, to complete that moratorium.
Okay.
And I believe that the county town council wants to look at everything that's there, anything from, uh, uh, as we can't, uh, we can't, uh, put a number of, of, uh, storefronts that we can have, that's not legal by the state of Maine, but what we can do is, is regulate the distance between them, distance from schools. Right now there are two. Excuse me just a second. Uh, there are two, uh, and another third one that just got approval. Uh, but nothing else will be, no other applications will be accepted until such point as we've rewritten the, uh, and, uh, ordinance and planning board will also be involved in that again. So.
Yeah. So that, that lines up. We, we had to tie, we decided we're going to make recommendations whether you wanted to hear them or not, and happily they decided they want to hear them. So that's good.
No, I think it's, I think it was a good move on, on, on the part of the town council and, uh, uh, we're, we're going to orchestrate it in a fashion that there'll be lots of input, lots of listening, and we come up with a, uh, with a final document.
Okay.
That's for the future.
Yeah, thanks Perry. So we have that issue. Um, and, uh, we, uh, Amy sent out the, it's been around, but it was, uh, emailed to you the, the current ordinance as it, as it stands right now. The second issue uh, was we, at our last meeting, we asked, uh, the town council and Perry and the town attorney to prepare a document for our, uh, perusal, um, that, um, that described what the town sponsored grow facility ordinance was, was for and why. So we had some direction on what that's about. Uh, we received that from, uh, town council chairman Jack Krikus, uh, over the weekend or Friday. That's been provided to all you two. So we have those two issues to, uh, address or start addressing tonight. Um, Perry's talked about the, uh, storefront thing being out till August. We want to be way in front of that with recommendations. Uh, uh, Jack suggested in his memo that we have any recommendations on the, uh, town grow facility by, um, earlier in the summer. So we need to get at that. Uh, so we can take them up in either order as they are, uh, does it matter or anybody have a preference which one we take up first? Okay. And let's do them as they're numbered. Okay, David, go ahead.
Now, I wasn't sure, uh, if you wanted to hit the medical marijuana first as that one you're doing the joint workshop on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dave. There, there's a whole other issue I didn't, yeah, thank you for focusing that.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was like.
There's too, there's too much marijuana going on there. So, so the, the other issue is the, uh, uh, the citizen petition warrant articles are, are being, uh, we, we did our thing a couple of weeks ago or a month ago with, we made very clear recommendations for, uh, to the town council and the town as to the planning board's recommendations regarding those. That, that's out there. The, as Perry mentioned, there's a hearing next Tuesday at the town council meeting, uh, which is required by the code for petition articles, which is going to be a joint uh, hearing of the planning board and the council on the two petition articles, separate from anything else. Um, so we've requested to have, uh, at least three of us present, uh, for that. Perry, is that going to be a virtual meeting?
Yes, it's going to be a virtual meeting, uh, and, uh, we'll put out, I'll be putting out the, uh, the, uh, Zoom stuff for that and make sure it gets public, publicized every place. Uh, uh, I'll give that to Amy tomorrow. It's just, it'll start out as a public hearing and then we go into a regular town council meeting.
Yeah.
Afterwards.
But you'd like, you'd like at least three of us to be present, to represent the planning board for that?
Yes. The reason for that is, is it's a joint meeting and having at least three of you there gives a quorum if questions are asked that you need to answer.
Yeah.
The second thing is, David, you need to be really careful. You were, you were talking about medical marijuana and we're talking about adult growth at the moment and.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going back to the meta, medical marijuana growing in the industrial districts.
Okay, that was, I think you are going to have some conversation, uh, about that maybe is one of, one of the other you are here, but I want to make, make note that the, the, the planning board has every right on these adult, excuse me, adult referendums to, to either, they can, you could even vote to, uh, against for whatever specific reasons, which I know you have those specific reasons already, because I've read some of them. Uh, and, uh, whether it's no, no input from the, the, the planning board or, or no zoning wasn't taken into effect here and it, it is detrimental. Uh, I believe very strongly that, that, well, I know that the town council can also take a position on these referendums.
Oh.
Can't put that position, though, into any of the materials. Once they, they can take a position by a vote as to whether they agree or disagree, which I'm likely to ask them to do. But they can't, uh, they can't be, have anything on the, uh, actual vote. And they will be signing the warrant for that meeting shortly because we have to get that out for absentee, uh, vote.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, good. Thank, uh, just to make sure everyone that's listening understands, I think they do. Uh, we finalized the memos on the 17th of, uh, of, uh, February, two memos separate. One, one for the, uh, uh, medical, uh, uh, use situation and one for the medical, no, sorry, medical, adult use situation and the other one for the adult, uh, cultivation thing. And we had separate memos and they were very strong and they, uh, they, they had specific reasons why we specifically advise or recommended that voters, uh, turn those down. So we're on record at, at that point. And so before we're done today, we want to make sure that we have three of us willing to show up to that Zoom meeting next Tuesday.
I can, I cannot make that meeting.
Okay. Well, let's do it right now. Who, uh, Hershey's in, Jeff's in, I'm in. And Jibetsy, if you want to join us, that'd be fantastic.
Okay.
That'll be next Tuesday. Okay.
I'll be riding her horse and won't be able to make it.
Yeah, right. It was a nice day. All right, I'm going to share my screen here. Where am I here? Share screen. And there it is. Share. You got that? Is that showing up?
Yes.
This is the, uh, medical storefront ordinance that was adopted, uh, in January of 2020. And, um, we had, this was, we reviewed it and it, it length with, uh, before it was done and with the, with the planning board, the town council and the, uh, uh, public hearing and so forth. And, and this is what it is as currently. Um, there's been, we have some experience with it now. We've, uh, approved three of these. Um, there was some misunderstanding as to a number of the provisions, uh, including the, um, setback from schools. And the things that I, I, I would take anybody's thoughts about reading, I would ask you to read it carefully and see what issues that you would have based on where we're at now. Things that I would suggest we look at is, um, this, this, uh, this section right here, separation from schools. There was a 500 foot setback established. Uh, and the, and the other thing that surprised me in the end, I should have known as it happened, but the distance shall be measured from the property line of the school to the entrance of the caregiver store by the ordinary course of travel. I had understand that to be birds, uh, as, as a crow flies, radiuses. And it, it, it shortens the distance to almost every setback that you can imagine from schools. The other issue was um, when the, uh, Seacoast Christian School became the Lafayette Inn, or whatever they call it now, that chunk of land got removed from school. And that sort of happened without anybody thinking about it. So that corner of that property where the inn is now, used to be much, uh, closer to other areas downtown. And we understood that the setback would apply all the way to Young Street in the B1 zone. It does not now, because the school took over the, or the school gave up its property for the Flynn Inn. Uh, and between that and the, um, uh, distance measurement being the ordinary course of travel versus the, uh, radius as a crow flies, uh, the area excluded from, um, medical marijuana is now smaller than many of us understood it would have been. So I, I think we ought to look at that and see about how we, how we deal with that. Um, the other issue was C, separation of, uh, caregiver stores from one another. Uh, and we had recommended, uh, I think 500 or a thousand feet, I think it was a thousand feet. And the town council adopted a 300 foot, which allows a number of, of stores to be placed in, uh, on Lower Main Street. Uh, and now there are two there. Uh, there could be more if, uh, the 300 feet stays. Um, there are other aspects of it, the storefront displays, there's some discussion about how that's playing out. Um, and, uh, other aspects are, are working okay, in my opinion. The odor management, we've been enforcing nicely where we can. The operational plans, they, I don't know that there, there's a problem there. It, in my mind, it's mostly a case of where they can be located and what density we would recommend the town, uh, have at this point when these things are new. Uh, it might change in the future, but as these things are coming in, uh, early on in the, in the history of them. Um, there was a, back on the separation from schools issue, there was discussion of another one coming in around the corner past the gas station, across from the, uh, Eastman House. Um, and that, that clearly was within a 500 foot radius, but the argument was made that as a person walks, not, not as a crow flies, it might have been 501 feet. So that, that, I think this is going to be tested. That hasn't come in front of us, but it, it was, it was talked about coming in front of us as an example. And that would have been located directly across in the Eastman House, directly across from the Sarah Orange Jewett House. And I think no one understood that that would be a location that would be appropriate, but that's my opinion. Um, so in the end, the zoning table here, uh, they are allowed in the B1 district with major site plan, we end the setbacks. They're not allowed in the B2 district. That was, that never happened. And they would be allowed in the, uh, I1 and I2 district with major site plan. So there's a portion of the B1 district and in the industrial zones, but not in any other zone. So I think the focus of what I'm thinking about, and I'm completely open to anybody else's thoughts, has to do with, uh, B and C, uh, and perhaps, and perhaps some others. So, uh, and B, C, and perhaps D. Um, we, we can, we can take those up and think about it and make sure that, that we are comfortable in what we would recommend at this time, having lived with this thing for a year and a half almost.
And we do it.
Yes, Betsy.
I was just going to say, I'd like to, I'd like to, um, maybe think about to like the signage, the signage part of the ordinance and what's allowed, what's not allowed. Maybe, you know, whether or not it requires approval, if there's a change.
Yep. You, yeah. So the storefront displays is different than signage. Signage is different than that.
Correct. Yeah. If, yeah, if you scroll down, there's a.
Where's, let's find.
Signage.
Uh, yeah, there, there's, there's people upset about the, the smoke rings down there on Lower Main Street on the, uh, the sign there. Thinking that's, that's not consistent with this. Where is the signage here? Uh, the, the.
Yeah, I just had it up on my phone.
Oh, I've, uh.
H for letter H, I think.
H, thank you, Jeff.
I've made an agreement, uh, Bill.
Yeah.
I've made an agreement with the store owner that the, uh, the, uh, smoke part of that will be gone.
Good.
And I happen to be, uh, following up on that shortly. So I, I think that Betsy's point about the, the sign is, is an important part. The second thing is, some of us are testing, testifying on the OMP, the Office of Marijuana Policy, next Monday, Jack and I are. Uh, that new stuff that they have makes it even, is even worse than what we have right now and gives us absolutely no authority. Uh, we don't know when a business has been sold, such as the one at the Pied Cow, uh, was actually, the ownership was changed from one part to, to the other, uh, because of the rules that are in chapter 22. We don't get any of that information, nor do we have any, uh, any place that we can, uh, actually get information as to, uh, when a business is approved. So that we are going to be beating on Augusta when it comes to this next Monday, uh, about those facts, the facts that we really are just outside of the realm of any information as to what's going on, who has a license, who doesn't have a license, who's changed their license. The piece in the air, I want to tell you, Bill, that you're spot on. Although we can't limit the, uh, number of establishments, uh, we can regulate the distance between them and whatnot, which virtually would, uh, be spot on as far as taking, uh, as far as the planning board and the town council taking a look at what the future of, uh, any additional stores, if that was to ever happen, uh, might be.
I've, I've heard, so I've heard a couple of times over the years, uh, uh, I don't know what, how, how it's played out, but I've heard that towns have set the numbers of stores and they do them by lottery. Is there any truth to that?
Well, they've done, they've done that in the past, but you can limit where they're at, which we already have to the B1 zone.
Yeah.
Which I think that, uh, I think that the, uh, that you, uh, we, we, we really all want to call it the B1 and the, and the B1 zone. we, we, we really all want to call it the B one and the, and the B one zone is the only place. We want to put geographic limitations as to where things can be instead of, and that takes, if they're within the, if they're within the numbers, that would take out the ability of, of any more licenses or applications at this point.
You mentioned, uh, that the Pied Cow, uh, changed hands from when it was Burt primitive?
Well, they had, you had Bill, I think his name was Bill, in there that presented.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, it's, it's one of his partners because they can't have, they can't have two stores owned by, operated by the same person. So one of his person, partners, I believe, bought out the other one. I haven't verified that yet. They can verify that you can regulate, you, you could regulate out any further stores simply by looking at the things that you've talked about so far.
Yeah. Alright, so I would, I would suggest that, unless there's specific, that we're, we're getting familiar with the issue here and what the questions are. Are there any other, I was, yes, we take this up more in earnest at next meeting. Uh, but are there any other general areas that people want to point out or comment on, Hershey?
Um, I, I do have a couple of questions. One is, whatever happened to the I one and I two issue around, there was some kind of shoreline for, uh, I don't remember what it was. There's a protection area there and an overlay that we hadn't
That was actually that, that was actually in the, uh, Lower Main Street in the B one section where they
No, 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 no. There was another one. There was another one in the I areas somewhere that came up. In I two, I think. And I, I never heard a resolution from it and I'm, I'm just wondering about that.
That's a good question. And that, 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 that warrants figuring out, yeah, there was Lawrence Brook or something like that.
And also
So Quan Fagan Brook.
It was Quan Fagan. Okay.
Right.
So did that basically mean that I two was off the table entirely?
I'd have to look at, you know, the distances depending on where it's at and stuff like that. But there's also Lord's Brook also.
That, that would relate to this issue, but also relate to the next issue.
Right. And I, I would ask, and I hate to make more work. Mike Lassell actually did this for me already, but, or offered it. I didn't ask for it. But I would really like to see a detailed map of Lower Main Street that has every house on it, just like our tax maps have, our town tax maps, um, and mark off three hundred feet. And maybe three hundred feet from what's existing. So we can just get a sense of how many more are we talking about? Are we talking about six or seven or eight? Or are we talking about one? And how many more can fit there?
Yeah.
Because it also feels like when we went through this process for two years and came to this conclusion, it was originally B one and B two and I one and I two. And it's all focused on B one because we haven't made those other areas really accessible, it seems. And that's part of why we have this concentration now. And so I, I think we should revisit it. I'm anxious to do that, but I'd also like to get a sense of really how many more are we talking about?
Yeah, good.
That, that Probably about two.
Yeah, well, let's get the map.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying that.
Yeah. David, is that, that should be fairly simple with the town zoning map or the lot map. Is that something you can pull together?
Yeah, I can. Uh, the other, excuse me, thing that I was going to ask you about is, uh, if we go back up to, um, the sections that you were talking about and submitting, uh, or the distance separations from the school.
Yep.
There we are. Yeah, item B. I know other ordinances talk about schools and other sensitive uses, uh, you know, synagogue, places of worship, you know, synagogues, churches, uh, mosques, what have you, temple, and any other things like that, or?
Yeah.
Or are we just limiting it to schools?
My own take on it is that the resulting setback using schools as the measure that we thought we were going to get excluded the business district of downtown, which people felt was, needed to be separated and felt it needed to be, it was very close to walkers to the school. So it, there was a school relevance to it, but it, everybody understood that it started out on, on the other side of the B one. Uh, I'm not sure if it's the setbacks themselves that drove it. The understanding was that the resulting, uh, locations were acceptable. And turns out with the removal of the Christian school, that we, we, we lost that. I'm all for, I'm all for looking at all those things.
Probably, I just see a comment come up about library. We ought to include that because that's a major part of
Right.
children's, uh, I, I personally am in favor of, uh, up in the distance and also to do it as the crow flies as opposed to a, as you go. And it should be relatively simple to make that recommendation.
Yeah.
That's what everyone agrees on. And Perry, what do you think the distance should be?
What, from, the distance would be a thousand feet from the school line. The, the, uh, the library, uh, the library to, from the, the school line across the library parking lot, it's not more than, uh, than, uh, four or five hundred feet. So, uh, a thousand feet as a crow flies would probably even take in the shop that's there now, but that would stay grandfather.
Oh, yeah.
You'd like to see a thousand feet as opposed to a five hundred?
I, I can't, I, I'm just telling you some ways that, that, that there, there's a potential of changing the ordinance if there are not going to be, the three stores are going to stay no matter what you do.
Yeah.
The grandfather. What you're looking at is the future of what, what, uh, want, you want to see on the on, uh, for any other future applications. Mike Lassell did a map and showed that right now there's availability of fifteen more.
Perry, I think, I think he included B two, which was incorrect.
Well, a, a, all right. I don't have it in front of me, Bill, and thank you for that. But I do know that there's availability of, of a number of more as geographic pieces are set right now.
That's correct.
And so I'm only making the suggestion that this doesn't have to be a long drawn out process to if, if the regulations are working, if the other pieces of the regulations, as you mentioned earlier, are working, then the, the, the way if, if it, one, the only way is to regu, the only way that we can prevent it is to regulate.
Yeah.
And right now the state's working on the fact that any caregiver can have a storefront. So I hope to see cards and letters go into Augusta after we testify on Monday because I've got the eighty pages of it and read it three times and it's confusing to me. We don't have, we don't know who the caregivers are. Only the ones that come to us for a storefront are the only ones that we know outside of the guy on, uh, on a Gunquit Road, Eric. The, we can't get a list of names. I know there's thirty-one or was two years ago, thirty-one caregivers, not including Eric in South Berwick. There were a hundred and three or a hundred and seven in Berwick, Elliott and North Berwick. So we have absolutely no way of getting names or, uh, finding out who's doing what or even except for right now with the storefronts, which is the only thing we could opt in or opt out of. And
But what, what I suggest we do for next time, and if David can pull this off, if you can just compile a map that we could put up here on a share screen, it exists. There's, there's a town map, Joe, Joe's got it. That shows all the lots in, in, in every, every, every downtown district.
I can send you, David, the, we can send you a list of all the owners, how old the buildings are.
Well, I don't
They used to be. So because that's what the downtown committee did when they were looking at expansion of being able to reopen businesses down there.
Yeah, but that, I, I think we could do that, but I think, I think if you know where the lots are, that might be enough too.
There's a map, there's a map already made is what I'm trying to tell you.
That's great.
Distances between, between the lines.
And we could, you could play around with some distances or we could, we could probably settle this in, in a meeting or two. I agree with Perry, it's not complicated.
I, I, I agree a hundred percent. There's no sense. We put a lot of time into it. Let's get the distance down. Let's say that it has a crow flies and move on.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So
Yeah.
And then I think, I think Hershey's question is excellent as they go, really, how, how many more can there be down on Lower Main Street within the areas that we have right now? And then what do we do? And then we make a reason thing. I, I like the idea of, uh, of, uh, Betsy's suggestion that we look at the storefront displays and we look at the sign ordinances rather carefully. Make sure it's got, they got the teeth in them that we want. Okay?
Just, just to add, Bill, um, I just want to caution us. I think this is a great thing that we're do, that we're looking at doing. But as we go into it, I don't want to fall into the same trap that was fallen into before in assuming that Central School is going to be there.
Right.
That's not hit by lightning in five months and burns down to the ground or something like that. We need to, we need to have the forethought. Since we're going out again, um, as well as the signage, I think we just need to, if we're going to dive into it, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't jive within the own ordinance, let alone with the, with the state stuff. So, um, I think there's things that could, we could do to help with that. So.
Alrighty then.
I, I agree. And I think by putting the, uh, library in there, that would would nail it down because I, I feel like this Central School are probably going to move that to another location, uh, in, uh, ten years, I'm sure.
Sure. Yeah, I agree.
You muted, Hershey?
Sorry, um, am I muted still? No.
No, you're okay.
I'd like to weigh in since I seem to always be on the other side of this and I'm not entirely. So our town went through almost a, a year or two year process to get to this point. And I feel like there was a lot of groundwork laid that we're now ignoring or forgetting about. And to me, it doesn't seem fair to go back somewhat under the radar because there's a small vocal minority who doesn't like it anymore. This was an ordinance that was about compromise, like most of the laws we have. Not everybody gets everything they wanted. But our town clearly felt like it was ready for medical marijuana retail stores. And we voted that way. We voted to legalize recreational marijuana, and this is medical marijuana we're talking about. And so the compromise was we ditched B two. We said I one and I two are okay, though it's very expensive to have to build something new there. And not surprisingly, we now have a concentration because we set ourselves somewhat up for that. Now, whether they should be five hundred feet or more, I, I don't know. I need to see it and I need to see how many we're talking about. And I don't want to have a dozen either. I agree with all of you. I think, you know, enough is enough perhaps, but I also don't think the idea is to completely like wipe them off the face of the earth. Right? The idea isn't to create an ordinance where basically they're just not allowed. This was the compromise we already reached to allow for some. And so I don't think we should be making it, you know, willy nilly a thousand feet or these houses be just to ban them. If you don't want them, just ban them then. And don't opt in. As opposed to, you know, let's find every way we can just to not have them anymore. There are people who actually use them in our town. There are people who grow in their town. I know some of them. And you don't even know where they are, making me think, what is the big problem with that?
Yeah.
Have a guy down the street with a little tiny hoop house that doesn't bother anybody and nobody even knows he's growing marijuana in the air. I don't know how that affects everybody on the screen so deeply that you're angry about the fact that we have thirty-one growers in this town. So what? How does that actually affect you on a day to day basis? I drive down Lower Main Street all the time and I don't, I'm not bothered by it at all. I don't see them. I don't, they don't bother me. There's no traffic. There's not a parking issue. What is the problem with it? If you don't like marijuana, talk about why you don't like marijuana instead of these constant red herrings about it affecting the library or affecting school or affecting people walking by it. Alright, I'm done now. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I, I think we, there are a lot of us that did just want to, uh, ban it. And, um, the chief police, uh, said that we should ban it until some of the other
No, he didn't. No, his letter did not say that, Manny. You are making that up. His letter did not
I'm not making up anything. I heard I heard him say it to me personally. Okay.
We're getting a little far afield here. I think the, the idea is no one's talking about, uh, uh, eliminating medical marijuana storefronts. We've had a year's worth of experience with existing ordinance. It hasn't played out the way some of us expected it to. And we, as a planning board, decided to, to take a look at these things. And coincidentally, the town council said, yeah, please do that. And so I think it's a question of, 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 no one's talking about being against marijuana. People are talking about regulating storefronts in a way that makes sense based on the experience that we have.
May I finish?
Sure.
Bill? So
Yes.
So, uh, what we ended up with is we came up with an ordinance and we said we'd watch it and see how it works. And that's what we're doing.
Yeah, right. And it turns out town councils asked us to do it, uh, coincidentally, which is a favorable thing. I think, I really, when this all started out, it was new territory, admittedly. And, and then, and then we get all these complications on top of it with other aspects of marijuana facilities. So this is actually perhaps the simplest thing we're dealing with.
Need to, you need to all understand that if you're a caregiver, the hundred and twenty or thirty that we might have now, you can be growing it right on the school line if you want to be. There's no regulations. The regulations pertain to storefronts. I know that there's pot growing within a hundred feet of one of our schools. So when we talk about this, we're talking about the stores, storefronts, not the caregivers, because the caregivers in, in chapter twenty-two and in in the new O M P stuff, all have the same rights. You don't have to be a thousand feet away.
Right, right. We, we all know that. Well, let, let's not, let's not go rehashing that. I, I like not to.
Well, when you're rehashing whether or not you're going to sell marijuana, I just want to, Hershey, Hershey's made, made a point. If you're selling it right now, if you're a caregiver, you can have an, an indefinite amount of, of people that you're selling to. If you're a store
No, no, you can't. No, you're actually regulated by the state and how many patients you're allowed to have. And the people I know adhere to that. They don't, they don't hand it out to people who don't have a card. They have a limited number of patients and they stick to that. So I don't know about every thirty-one. I know about two, but they follow the law that allows them only so many patients and so many plants. And that's it.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I'll stop.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so I'd ask the planning board, uh, we're going to get some mapping assistance next time. And I'd ask everybody to read the, uh, ordinance in some detail and be prepared to make some specific recommendations over the next meeting or two. That make sense? I'm not opening up for outside comment yet. I will though. Okay. I'd like to, we gotta stay, I would like to take up the next topic. And then after that's done, I'd be happy to open up for a public comment. And, uh, so with that, yes. The other topic, uh, let me get the, uh, hang on a second here, find it. Shoot, bear with me. Here we go.
Hey, Bill, before we move on, Greg has been trying to get our attention for some time and put in the chat that it's relevant to medical marijuana.
Okay, Greg, please talk.
Thank you, Bill. I won't, I, I won't try to take up too much of your time. But when you're talking about, you know, the medical marijuana, you do have to consider some, I believe, some additions to the ordinance because right now you have an established use in town. So I think you might want to look at what the ordinances state, uh, in regards to the current use. Because right now, regardless of what happens as you move forward, and if someone were to leave and if the distances were to be changed, you have a building that's, that already has a current use established in it of a medical storefront. So you're going to have to look at a current use issue. And I also think, uh, I saw a little bit of debate in the chat about this licensing issue. And the, I think the licensing issue in this town is a little bit light. I think it could use some improvement. And I would encourage you, uh, if there's this change in ownership with the Pied Cow, to really look at regulating these more along the line of, uh, similar to the liquor license approach. And that is the license is granted to the individual, uh, on an individual basis. So if that individual were to leave, that permit, then the license goes away. And then that, a new individual coming in would then have to be relicensed. So I think there's really two additions you might want to pay attention to that might have unintended consequences if you don't address those now, even if you're trying to Even if you're trying to uh address those distancing issues.
Greg, I would, those are excellent points and I would, uh, if you got it in you, please uh send us an email with those points so that they're written down.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, good. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again. Share my screen. Come on, there it goes. This is the uh memo that uh we got from Jack. I think we were probably taking a quick look at it. Um, and is the 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 background of the general of the business of marijuana in town and then. Uh, where was it here? These paragraphs here are the ones I think are are most relevant to the next topic. And that uh. There was a proposal for uh medical marijuana cultivation facilities. That was uh not allowed, not given a permit by the code enforcement. That was appealed to the zoning board of appeals. Appeal was denied and they're they're waiting for that to go to another, to court or not. And it's been the judgment of the town council and the town attorney and town manager that um uh to uh. Preempt future applications. Uh, that we can't stop perhaps based on the uh argument about agricultural use of land. That we adopt a town ordinance for the medical grow option. To limit it, to choose where we would take it, where to put it. So that if it's approved in that location, it it by definition is not allowed everywhere. If I, if I got that about right, Perry? Yeah, he's nodding his head. Okay, good. So that that's why we're asked to look at this, the the town council and uh. Uh, so the main uh planning commission and. Uh, town attorney put together the 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 ordinance for the public uh. The medical grow that was in front of us. Now we have the explanation. Uh, and I think it's incumbent upon us to take a look at it uh in earnest because we've been asked to do it and now we have the reason why. Um, uh, anybody have a preliminary comment before we dive in?
Yeah, I do.
Please.
So the the gentleman or company that's taking us to court. Is uh where we're proposing it in that same location.
I don't know that.
No one's taken us to court yet. We have not received anything from court action.
I I don't, I don't know.
We've received letters from an attorney that said that they may, but that doesn't mean that they're going to.
Yeah.
I stand corrected. It is where we're proposing it, the same location. That they uh have tried to get a permit. Yes.
Okay, but but.
Now in. In that location, um, can. Is it just industrial or is it housing or what it, what is available in that location right now?
There's no housing allowed, residential allowed in the industrial area zones.
Right. I I one, I two, yeah.
There's no residential allowed in the, in the industrial zones?
And the site is at least fifteen hundred to two thousand feet from the school line as the bird flies.
Right. So I wa- I wasn't aware of that. So there there is no residential allowed in the resident, the industrial zone at all at this point?
You can't get a bu- building permit, Joe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, yeah, the industrial zone, I one, no residential. I two still allows residential, but there's only, that's the right hand side, the school side of the um two thirty six.
So Joe, is everything on the uh um, the north side or the east side? Is that all I one?
Yes.
So the I two, I two is the corresponding side on the.
Was school side, yeah, the school side from Fife Lane down.
Right. And and the proposal includes, uh, I thought I one and I two?
That was what the um current ordinance now says I one and I two.
Okay, let me pull that up.
Yeah, cuz it was, it was B one, I one and I two.
No, I'm talking, I'm changing subject. I'm talking about the the med- the medical grow facility that in the town's uh proposal.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that. I.
Uh, let me uh share again if I can do that.
I one and I two, Bill.
Was it? Okay, yeah.
Uh, damn it, okay. Uh, am I sharing? I'm not sharing. Hang on a second.
There you are.
Getting late. Here we go. Okay, and David started to talk about this last time. Um, where was the zoning? Uh. David, help me out here. I'm not looking at the right thing.
Can I share my screen?
Yeah, you could. Yeah, please. I got this all screwed up.
Okay.
Let me stop sharing.
And that should be. Alright, you should be seeing at the very top, it says.
There you go, thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I one, I two.
Yep.
Okay, so the manly's question, I two does allow uh 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 some limited residential?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Um, so I'm not sure how we wanna attack this. First of all, does everybody understand why we're doing it and and that we should keep doing it?
Yes.
Okay.
It is there, is there an option to not allow it anywhere or is that not?
I I don't understand that there is. I understand that there is not. If we don't, if we don't, if we don't uh uh allow it someplace. The interpretation is that it is allowed.
Allowed everywhere, even if we explicitly don't allow it?
You have.
We can't put ends across the board.
You have to regulate it out by distance or other other features.
Right, well, I I wanna suggest we take I two off the table right away. And only allow it in I one.
Okay, uh uh I I'm not against that. I probably support it. And what are the, what are the reasons that you're thinking, Hershey?
Well, it is residential there. I drive down there all the time. And though I don't think two thirty six is sort of the sterling, beautiful part of our town. And it should be industrial, but you have to put it somewhere. I also just think there's more opportunity for residential building there. And I'd much rather see residential go there than, you know, this.
Uh, on the same side as where the school is.
Yeah, yeah, um, so there's also a lot of wetlands there and I'd rather see them like bothered if we don't have to, but that's a whole.
There's not, there's not as much land over there outside the school as well.
Um, no, there is, there is a lot of undeveloped between there and Old Fields Road. Um, there's actually quite a bit, but it's like I say, a lot of it is wetlands and um.
The I two zone only goes to the real lots of the budding two thirty six. It doesn't go all the way to Old Fields.
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, it only goes.
That's our, that's our.
Along two thirty six.
Right.
Their back lot and that's it.
Okay.
Right.
Eliminates a lot.
Does the um, uh. Is the proposal that is was denied by Z B A, is that in I one or I two?
I one.
Okay.
Can I ask Perry a question, though? Hey, Perry, in your master plan of commercial development. Is I two part of that? I mean, are you expecting to see, you know, that strip of two thirty six become more heavily developed over time?
I'm in negotiations for, with the building of the new road that took place on Lord's Lane Extension. Uh, Bartlett is planning to sell his land to a developer. And I expect to see uh a lot of both, not heavy industrial, but light industrial. Or commercial growth on that hundred acres that's uh back off the road there.
Is that?
That's I one.
That's I one.
On I two.
Yeah, that's an I one. And commercial growth in I two, I don't expect to see much because most of it is wetlands.
Right.
Uh, you wouldn't see anything for marijuana on the uh, on the the school side. Because uh uh there there's only wetlands and uh it's probably not more than a thousand feet to Fife Lane. Uh, from the edge of there, that goes down with a bit in the back.
So I I actually think we should just take I two off the table.
Another option would be to change I two to I one.
That's a zoning question that you, we would have to take to uh uh a a vote, right, Joe, I think? Or Bill? So any zoning changes require.
Yeah, they.
A town, special town meeting or.
Correct. They would have to, they would have to agree, put it out to, you know. But at the same time, I don't think you gain in anything because again, there's not a lot of land on that side of the road. That is buildable because of the wetlands.
What I, what I say, yes, we do. If if for next time, we have uh uh the a map that shows all of I two and all of I one. And we can look at it and 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 make these judgments. I, well, I I'm familiar with it most. The the high school takes up a lot of space. To the uh north, the high school is all wet for a long way. And and when you finally come out to Fife Lane, there's a little bit of dry land, not much. Um, but there is that spot that, what's his name, wanted to do a subdivision.
Right, where the, where the sign is, right, where they're planning to develop a little cluster there, no?
Right, right, yeah, the sign that went up, it shouldn't have been there.
There's two lots available on that property that would fit, that would be able to to uh. Fit within the wetland setback.
Yeah, and then then the idea is also, I mean, if you're thinking about the app, the uh uh. Appeal of I one versus I two. I one, all the developable land to speak of is on the other side of the power lines, right, Joe?
That is correct, yes.
So so that that creates a a natural buffer of a significant natural buffer from everything.
Correct.
Uh, between the wetlands that are along the road and then you go across the 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 power line and the and the gas line to the developable land. Uh, that's separated from everybody.
Correct.
It's, Joe, isn't the uh, isn't the gun club uh on this side of the uh, of the uh power line? And the gun club is in I one.
Yeah, a lot, a lot, yes, some, but not all of I one is what I'm saying. Like, we just approve, we approve that uh self-storage there and that's, that's, that's on the, that's on the roadside of the power line. But uh.
Yeah.
So if we could, if we could have the the I one, I two maps next time, we could take up this and really, really evaluate. I think Hershey's uh got a very um intriguing proposal here on I two.
I I have another question too, and I think David, this is maybe a question for you or for Joe. Are we allowed to limit the size of the facility? Are we allowed to say a building can't be more than twenty thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet or five thousand square feet or?
You, I mean, it, it, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's, there's other ordinances out there that have limited, limited um building sizes. You know, so like, you know, they have done it.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanna limit the size of buildings in the industrial, uh, for example, the industrial one districts. We haven't done that yet. Right. Uh, could you, could you flip down, David, to the setback language in here?
Sure.
So far?
It's right here under number eight. Could see this?
Yeah, five hundred feet. So that, we gotta look at that number and see what that means for the school and.
Okay.
Interestingly, I I I I. On the, behind the football field at the school, I was there ten, fifteen years ago watching a game. And there's, there's a cemetery at the edge of the school property, way up on a, on a knoll because they excavated it out. There's a little family cemetery up there. That's interesting.
There's, there's actually Old Fields Road is dotted with, you know, there's tens of them, so, many.
Okay, is there any other setback language in here so far, David?
No, this is um, the setback language that I put in there. Uh, again, talks about um within five hundred feet. And what I listed in here was an existing public or private school. I didn't know if we wanna make that distinction right now. We did, daycare facility, possibly, um, not home daycare. But cemetery, park, playground, place of worship, or any municipal facility, not including the transfer station. I didn't see a need to do, do anything like that, but I just put, I just put what I've seen in other ordinances. Um, to cover us, but and that we could modify, take out if we.
Yeah, okay, well, change, that's fine, that's fine.
And and what about um distance from another uh marijuana establishment? I I tried looking in here. I didn't see anything like that mentioned. Is it?
Say again, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Is there, is there a a call out for how far? Uh, if I put a, if I put a a a place up there, does it say I have to be three hundred feet from um Tommy's? Next, you know, next warehouse? Is there a call out between other marijuana establishments for that area?
Uh, not for, I I didn't put anything in there as as far as medical cultivation in the I zone, in the I zones, I should say. Because if if it's gonna be an allowed use or permitted use, why put a limit on it, really?
Okay.
But yeah.
Nope, I I see your point. Um. One of the thoughts that pop in, pops into my mind is, um, I think a lot of us, um. A lot of people end up thinking marijuana is marijuana, whether it's medical or or not. I I see some difference, but um. This has to do with medical cultivation, right? So I'm clear. Okay, good. I just wanna make sure I have, so um. Does it? Can we make it broader? So we're not making another ordinance for adult use cultivation or do we have to? Is that a question we should be asking now since there's a lot going into it?
Um, my understanding of that, Jeff, is a great question, but and I, the the, since Perry's with us and um and David's with us. This is complicated because uh the way the law works or has worked, you had to opt in to medical storefront. If you don't opt in, it doesn't happen. You have to opt into uh adult, adult retail. And the the citizen's petition is trying to bypass that, but that that you, if we don't do it, then it's not allowed. And you have to opt into, what's the third thing?
Uh, adult storefronts.
Right, right, so, but 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 the medical grow. It the the, it's not clear that that you, the town, it's that that the town has the option of opting in or not. The interpretation that I'm gathering, gathering from uh Jack's memo to us is that that's not the case. That one can do a medical cultivation facility anywhere that is agriculturally zoned. That's that's not opt in. So the adult is opt in, the other things are opt in. This would not be an opt in. If I got that right, David and Perry?
This would be uh an ordinance that would control the growth areas.
Right, but but the the, because we can't uh stop this by not opting in. We don't, we don't have that that ability. We we to say, uh, you can't do this cuz we haven't opted in. I think our understanding is that that's not clear, that 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 is a prohibition.
That's, that's correct. So the the the, the only thing you can do is regulate.
Right.
Regulate what, where the facilities can go and and uh and those other things attached.
Yeah, so to to your question, Jeff, I don't think, that's a lot of changes. That we have to say you can't have an adult uh retail because we haven't opted in. Uh, unless, unless the citizen's petition bypasses it.
Right, adult, adult growing.
Uh, right, correct.
We're, we will, we will, uh, Jeff, maybe I can help you with a question. The answer to that is, right now, a medical uh cultivation facility. Cannot sell to an adult growth facility, only to medical facilities. Medical storefronts or caregivers who can't grow enough themselves. A, an adult facility uh is something, adult growth, adult storefront, an adult. an adult, uh, uh, growth facility, uh, will probably not pass tender for opt in in the town of, of South Berwick, as we're seeing in the two, the reaction to the, to, uh, citizen petitions that we have. But that is one of the reasons also that you're seeing the one up in Berwick out here on Route four. You saw that they built a second building?
Yeah.
The reason for that is, they're gonna sell both adult and medical. But they can't sell them on the same building, so.
Okay.
They're doing a good job.
Okay, no, thanks, thank you Perry. I, I didn't mean to get us off, off.
No, 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 no. Our, our job is to think out of the box here, that's good.
I just didn't want to, we're doing a lot of talking and work on it, and I thought, oh, well, we can put a bigger umbrella, but I see what the point is, so, sorry about that. Thank you.
Yeah. I think, uh, we, we have a much better sense of what this is for. If next time we have the map, so we can see what I one and I two are, and what limitations are there, what else is around them? Uh, what, what's up in the industrial park, what's over at, uh, uh, Punkin Town Place, uh, there's some dance works, you name it. And we have the fishing game club, whatever, and look at those and really, really take a look and see what, how this might work. And then if people could take a look at this document in, uh, some, some time and, and, and see whether, whether there, there are, are issues that you'd like to take up or modify. Uh, we can advance this, uh, pretty well, not to the end, but, uh, long, long the way down, uh, into, uh, next week, I have, next time we'll have a, a, a good, um, chance to advance this. Bill, would it be, uh, would it be helpful for the board, uh, if there's, when people are going through, uh, the, sort of their proposed ordinance, if there's anything that they want to call out? They can sort of highlight, uh, whatever, they can highlight it and whatever they, way they wish, and then I can see if there's overlapping kind of things. That's great, that'd be very good. If people want to take some time, mark up one of these things, send it to David, and he can, uh, use that as a clearinghouse to get us a little farther ahead next time. Yeah, kinda like what we did with the, uh, yeah, the two citizens positions. Thank you. Okay, I'll stop sharing this. Actually, you, you. I'm sharing it. Yeah, thank you. I tried, I couldn't do it. Uh, and, uh, with that, I'll open it up for comment by anybody else besides the planning board for a few minutes here before, before we, if anybody has some other ideas or comments they'd like to make based on any of these, either of these marijuana, uh, issues. Uh, Pam Do Long, I saw your hand first.
She's on mute.
She's trying to unmute, I think. Pam, you want to unmute and talk? Oh, she's frozen now. Okay, we'll get her back. She, yeah, she's frozen. Okay, um, Greg, you had a comment, I think.
Sure, uh, you know, I guess I'll take a little bit of a different approach, probably no surprise. I don't see the need for this, Bill, per the conversation, uh, that we had at the last meeting. The letter from, uh, the town council to the planning board, really, in my view, doesn't answer any questions. Uh, it doesn't answer the core question related to medical cultivation, because the law is, it's inarguable, arguable that medical cultivation is not an allowable opt-in function. I believe the intent of the regulation is regulating the caregivers who are allowed to cultivate. That is this loophole, this agricultural loophole that people keep talking about. Well, you cannot opt into medical cultivation on this large scale. The, the medical caregivers can cultivate, and, and my point is, this ordinance seems to be allowing a brand-new, expanded use uh, that isn't otherwise really allowable. Uh, and so I see this disenfranchising all the current caregivers in town, uh, who were allowed to grow, uh, small operations, uh, at this point in time. Uh, and so I, I really view this as an expanded, uh, use of, of, uh, of something that really just is not allowed. And so.
So you would, you would disagree with the council and the town attorney on their position?
Well, uh, I didn't see any legal interpretation or justification. Again, what I've seen from the, uh, the, the, the town attorney has been the word "some towns may choose to do this." Again, this is a cultivation issue. And if we're, and, and I think we're allowing an expanded use, this concept of a growth facility. I've scoured the laws, and I am unable to find any reference to this growth facility. It's a cultivation issue that is not allowed under state statute. I don't see a gray area. You can regulate the medical caregivers, and they are allowed to cultivate. I think you can regulate them as home occupations where they are right now. You can put a licensing restriction on them, perhaps, I don't know. But I look at this as just, again, it's, it's, it's allowing an expanded use of something where you don't otherwise need to do it. Uh, and so I don't, I, I just don't see the need for this particular type of ordinance, but that's my opinion. And so if you're asking me if I disagree, I do.
Okay, I mean, we, we have to take.
Understood.
We, 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 we've had, I, I mean, someone has to tell me that it's so.
Yeah, well, again, I just, if you really read that letter carefully, it's not answering any of the questions that even you folks raised at the last.
We, we didn't ask for a legal letter, we asked people to consider it and, and respond, and they did in good faith, so.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting that it's anything but good faith, but it doesn't, to me, it doesn't answer the questions, but I'm not the decision maker.
We'd love to have you as decision making, Greg.
Happy to help.
Barbara, go ahead.
So, um, if caregivers are already able to grow, so this is Barbara Hopkins' land. If they're able to grow anywhere in town where they live, and they're allowed a five-hundred-foot canopy, then by allowing some larger industrial processing place, I'm concerned that it almost puts the smaller caregivers out of business. I, I'm concerned about the big businesses coming in. And if you look at Sweetter, you look at some of the Colorado, even, um, Time Farms is not local. So, how much do we need? Um, I wanted to comment back on the medical storefronts. And when that first was brought up, and I know we've been talking about it for years, but at the get-go, the beginning was the earliest, closest place that we could get to was, I think, Bitterford. And, and so now that we have, there's so many places around us, I do encourage you to increase the distances, just so we can have a greater diversity of business in our town. And, and I, and I really hope that you will do that with the medical storefronts. And I understand what's grandfather is grandfather, but also adding in that changeover. If we do get change, how do we address that? I think that's important to do. So, thank you. And I'm glad you're considering, at least thinking about the other places that we have children. Whether it's library, churches, you know, dance studios, wherever. Thank you.
Pam, you froze up. You were gonna be first, and you froze up. Are you there? Pam Do Long? Looks like you're frozen again, I'm sorry. David? Yeah, could I, I just wanted to make a little bit of a clarification, because there seems to be some kind of, there, there's, we're talking about medical growers, and so there's medical cultivation, and there's sort of the home-growing operations where you are limited. You are limited by the state to how many clients you're allowed to grow for. Uh, and how, uh, depending on if you're a registered caregiver, so you have to be a registered caregiver. You are limited by how many people you can sell and grow for, period. So, well, and, and there are, um, so the home, the small home growers, when I've talked to the state before, they have basically said to towns, that's permitted in their own house for their own use, and if they got medical certification, they can limit themselves to five or six, I can't remember what, how many it is. There is also the, the distinction between what we're looking at here in the industrial district is large, commercial-scale growing facilities, which, um, most of these buildings, uh, that I've come across are multi-tenant buildings. Some of them are, uh, home, sort of home growers, and they lease the space, they keep all their operations and all their stuff. So you might have one of these growing operations be a single grower who's a corporation kind of thing, or you could have, you know, twenty different small growers in. So, you know, you're, you're not regulating the little guy out, uh, as far as regulating at the, at the, at the town level, but, um, this is really talking about substantially bigger, uh, growing-type facilities, you know, these are twenty, thirty, forty thousand plus square feet. But they could have multiple different licensees from the state in that facility. Maria? I, I think Pam just came back for a second.
Just a, a couple of things, um, I have been calling the state, both the Office of Marijuana Policy and the Department of Agriculture. And some things have changed, and they've changed fairly recently. One of the things now is there is no limit to the number of patients that medical caregivers can work with. That we started out with thirteen, when it was changed, there is no limit now. So I think you need to go back to the regs and really dig deeply into that. I also think that you need to look carefully, uh, at the fact that, you know, these thirty-three thousand square feet um, of growth space that's been proposed here. It's a huge drain on our resources. There's groundwater pollution, there's light pollution, and there are many, many things to be considered, and I have some studies on that. But additionally, look into those regs, because now what it says very clearly is that there can be shared space between recreational cultivation and medical cultivation. Now, they can't mingle their product, they had to have, have designated separate space, but it is allowed. And so Jeff, your question about, you know, what about the recreational? Well, you could very easily have recreational cultivation going right in the same facility, and it is permitted by the state. So I think that's another thing that you should really be digging deeply into, and the ground is shifting all the time with these regulations. The other piece is, um, when I did speak to the Department of Agriculture, it was Frank O'Kline. And what he told me, and he was very clear on this, um, because the Marijuana Policy Office sent me over to agriculture, and he said, no, we do not do any regulation of marijuana cultivation. So, that, that memo, I believe, may have a fallacy in it, saying that it's, you know, the Department of Agriculture, it's not. Um, they regulate only hemp. And he told me the reason they cannot regulate agriculture of, or cultivation of marijuana is because it's still, uh, a class-one drug, and under federal law, they're not allowed to. So all of those regulations around cultivation, and we cannot find any reference anywhere to the word marijuana growth. It, it all appears to be cultivation, is the term that's being used, comes under the Office of Marijuana Policy.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think that there's, there's so much change going on here. It, it's certainly not simple, but I think, you know, before we go too far down the path, I think we ought to consider as a community um, the, the greater impact of a thirty-three thousand-foot cultivation facility. And, and all of the impact on water, on groundwater pollution, on use of elec- electrical use is incredible. So, you know, we have research and we'll be glad to share it, but, and I, I know it's a difficult thing for you, but we'll share what we have.
Um, I would love to see that information if you would send it to the planning board.
David? Let's, let's take this, uh, or, or, or Joe. The proposal that didn't get, uh, uh, a, a building permit that would, that precipitated all this. Um, were it not, they say it wasn't, it had, say it wasn't marijuana, say it was something else, but it was still the same building, would not. Would it not have required a planning board review, like a site plan review?
Oh, depending on what they were gonna use it for, yes.
Anything, if they were gonna just leave it as a building.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It would, it would have come to the planning board or a site plan review.
Correct.
Okay, so the, the only distinction here is that, so, so the, the drainage and light use and all that would have been under our, our, our other zoning ordinance, is the site plan review. It's just the marijuana thing, uh, caused it to stop, okay, yeah.
Can I ask, can I ask a question, since people know a lot more about this than I do to some extent? I assume we're gonna collect commercial property taxes that go to the town. Like, perhaps other sale taxes go to the state, but just like any commercial property, we would be getting the benefit of taxes from that, right, Harry? Am I right?
Uh, if, if, if I may, Bill. The answer to your question, uh, yes, Hershey, is, is this. The model that, that, uh, the individual brought to the table that was refused because we had a moratorium, actually has, uh, that thirty thousand square feet, but it has, it has, uh, quite a number of, uh, of tenants. The building is divided with all separate entrances, and it has a number of tenants. The town, if this, if we had this ordinance, Elliot charges in the same case, because the individual has a building there, or one in Berwick. But they charge every individual in the building fifteen thousand dollars. So let's say that we had a dozen people growing, dozen different people growing with a five-hundred-foot canopy, all caregivers, whatever.
Okay.
That we would receive fifteen times twelve, and, and my mind's spongy tonight, so I, I apologize. On top of that, it's a three or four billion dollar building of which we would collect taxes on. And this is outside of our TISO.
So, okay.
So that's the answer to your question.
So, yeah, so we would reap the benefit of having commercial property taxes assessed on the building that pay for some of at least what they would use in our town, I assume. Like, we don't get nothing from this. It's not just the drain, they pay taxes, right?
Right.
And in fact, your dream has been to develop the commercial area of our town in order to reduce people's residential property taxes by increasing our commercial property taxes. And we don't have the benefit of Pratt Whitney, for example, like, you know, North Berwick has lower property taxes because they have a huge industrial complex there, yeah?
That's correct.
Okay.
Pam, you've been trying to talk, and you keep freezing up, so if you can get going, please do.
Thank you so much. I don't know how many of you live on Main Street. I know Linda does. I live on Main Street. I'm on the corner of Main Street and Young Street. And I really care how many of these storefronts are downtown. I really do. I know some of you say, well, I drive through town, it won't change at all. This is my neighborhood. It does impact me, and I, I just hope to heavens you give this some careful consideration as to the, the distance between these shops, the distance to the library, the distance to the school, because it will impact those of us who live on Main Street. It has on Lower Main Street. I've spoken to people that live there. The security lights, the in-and-out, the traffic. I care about this. Um, so I hope you give this really careful consideration as to what the restrictions will be downtown. And at the last meeting, someone made the point of, how many pharmacies do you need downtown? I mean, this, this town is one block long, the, the commercial part of it, and then up Portland Street. How many do you need? I mean, we have one pharmacy in town. Do we need four pharmacies in town? Uh, if these were bars, would you want to see bars every three hundred feet in town? I, I just pray to God you give this some careful consideration for these distances. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
David, have you been trying to get a word in here? You all? No, not at this point. Well, this has been a good discussion, and, oh, Gloria.
I just want to obviously support Greg. I do think Greg is bringing up some very valid points. I have not been yet convinced. I have not been yet convinced that this is necessary or required on, from a legal standpoint. I just don't feel like the memorandum that was written has provided that information clearly. I'm certain that it was written in good faith. Jack is a wonderful man, and I, and I, I'm grateful for his effort. But when I read it, I'm not convinced, and this is such a massive and significant change for our town. This building will go in near our high school, where my kids are going to go to school. And before we jump in on this very quickly, because we're under the gun and we feel the clock ticking. I caution you to please make sure that from a legal standpoint, this is absolutely necessary. Because if you think, you, you know, P parents are going to be outraged, be, once they see this going in across from the high school. I guarantee, half the people don't know. I didn't know what was going on with medical, because I didn't hear about it. And we found out, you know, what's going on, and people get upset, and the same thing's going to happen. I guarantee it. And I just would urge you, please, from a legal standpoint. Get your legal opinion, verify that we have no other option. Verify what exactly all of the options are. I feel like we're being a bit railroaded into one direction. And I'm, I haven't been convinced it's necessary, and I think a lot of you aren't convinced either. Thank you.
Okay, Perry, I can give you the last word.
All right, well, I, 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 I've restricted myself from saying this, but Greg. I provided you with letters from our attorney that says we need to do something about this. If you had a county, a county case, I'm pretty sure that you would follow the, the lead of whatever your attorney said. So when you keep saying that you believe this doesn't happen, then you should ask your county attorney. If this was happening in your, in your county, what you would do, because it actually is. Is not ethical for us to be, to have a disagreement such as this. We belong to organizations that we don't get involved in each other's business. But my attorney has said we need to do this. And unfortunately. You don't believe that my attorney, that's what you've told everybody tonight.
Perry, I'm not here in my official capacity, so uh, please refrain from bringing that up. I'm here as a citizen. Uh, and my review of the letter.
The letter from Jack is not the letter I'm talking about. I have sent you directly letters from our attorney.
Yes, Perry, and it referenced. Some towns may do this.
Okay.
Our attorney says we need to do this.
Let, let me, Greg, I, if you have a different thing to articulate, I would. Uh, invite you to write that down too, as opposed to. Um, these sort of ad hoc discussions, and then we can evaluate what you have to say in writing. That, that, I would invite that.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you, Greg. I don't mean disrespect.
Okay, all right. I was hoping we could keep this to two hours, and we're right on.
You're looking for a motion?
No, in a minute, in a minute, Manley, in a minute. If, if, if anybody else has something that they want to say they haven't had a chance to address tonight. I'll give them one last chance. If you've talked already, and it's a nuke thought, please, otherwise. Okay, Barbara.
The, the other thing that I was concerned about was the light pollution factor, and I don't know if it's in that ordinance. Um, I haven't read the whole thing. But, um.
In, in general, in general, the, that's covered under the zoning ordinance, otherwise for anything. You could have a. X, Y, Z there, and you, so it's not, I'm not specifically covered. Uh, separately here, but we'll look at that.
Okay, and then the only other thing that I. Hershey mentioned before that this is a small group that disagrees, and it's not a small group. It's just that only some of us don't have little kids, and we can be here all the time.
It's. Right, but I, I'd like to point out that our town voted in favor of this, right? You are not the majority of our town. I know you think you are. But our town voted in favor of legalizing recreational marijuana, and that's what I listened to.
Okay, e- excuse me, let me finish. And, and at that time, there was not all of the availability around us. At that beginning, and when those things were starting, the closest was Bitterford. Thank you.
Okay. Manley?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Everybody. Bye-bye.